Suddenly, we have a quorum, so I'd like to call the July 12 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting to order. And first, ask if you have cell phones, pagers, or any other similar device, if you would silence those or turn them off. We would appreciate that. If you are not the applicant and you've come to talk to us today about a case, if you would fill out one of these little sheets and give it to our secretary here, we'd be happy to hear you. They're found on the table right outside the chambers. And the next order of business is approval of the June 14 minutes. No approval. Second. We have a motion and second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes. And the minutes are approved. You've got it right. J.J., next is continuance request.
Two uncontested continuances. Item 25, PC 10-303, requested deferred August 9th. And item 26, SPUD 676, has been withdrawn.
Did anyone come to talk to us about either of those cases today? They're items 25 and 26 on our agenda. Move the uncontested continuance. There's a motion and second to approve the uncontested continuances. Cast your votes. And those are approved.
We have several new requests for continuances. Item 4, C 6363 to August 23rd. Item 11, SP 449 to August 9th. Item 13, CE 829 to August 23rd. Item 16, C 6361 to August 9th. Item 17, C 6362 to August 23rd. Item 19, PC 10-276 to August 9th. Item 20, SP 446 to August 23rd. Item 21, PC 10-311 to August 9th. Item 22, SPUD 670 to August 9th. And item 24, CE 821, deferred indefinitely.
I'll ask the same question again on items 4, 11, 13, 16, 17, 19, 20, 21, 22, or 24. Is there anyone who came to talk to us about any of those cases today? Move the continuances, Ezred. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the additional continuances. Cast your votes. Those are approved. Are there any continuance requests today from anyone in the public? I'm sorry? Okay, the consent docket, next, J.J.
Consent docket is item 1 through 6. That's C 6358. Item 2, C 6359. 3, 6360. 5, 6364. And 6, 5950.
Did anyone come today on items 1 through 6 on our agenda? Move the consent docket. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes. And that's approved.
First item for public hearing is item 7, SPUD 660. Application by Christina Sundry, rezoned 4321 Southeast 59th, from the C 3 district to the SPUD 660 district, Ward 4.
Members of the commission, thank you for your time today. My name is Christina Sundry. I am the applicant for this application. Upon review of the staff report, I approve the change of the application to the staff's recommendation to limit one free standing accessory sign on our site.
Commissioners, no one has signed up. Any questions? You'll recall at one point, they wanted to do industrial hallway north from 59th Street, and it's now limited. No one signed up. Move the approval. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item 7. Cast your votes. And you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8, C 6346, final plat of Kings Park Villas, located southbound 9th Street and east of Pennsylvania Avenue, Ward 5.
Good afternoon. Kendall Billen with Craft and Toll, representing the applicant. And this is a final plat that is identical to the approved preliminary plat. We're in agreement with all the TEs, and we'd ask for your approval.
No one has signed up. Move the approval. We have a motion and second to approve item 8. Cast your votes. And you're approved. Thank you.
Item 9, SPUD 667. Application by Inman Rad, rezoned 330 Southwest 104th Street, from the AA district to the SPUD 667 district, Ward 5.
Good afternoon. My name is Belinda Sullivan, and I work for the owner of BMW Investments. We first submitted the plan May with 22 residential homes, asking for the front part to be an O2, the back part to be an R1. But at that first hearing, we did ask for a postponement so that we could speak to the neighbors. We gathered their information as to what their requests were and what their concerns were. At that point, we went back and we submitted new plans for the first portion to still be the office, the back portion to be four lots, approximately three quarters of an acre each, allowing for the easements for utilities and the driveway. At that point, we did submit letters to all of the surrounding residents with a copy of the plans, asking them if they would let us know if they had any other concerns, and we have not received anything else from them.
Let me ask you a question. What you have done now by reducing the number of lots to four, is that what they were asking you to do?
Yes, sir. They were very concerned that 22 homes would devalue their properties. Okay? They also wanted it to be more consistent with the area. They asked for one drive versus two drives, only one exit, exiting 104th versus the two.
Okay. Commissioners, we have a number of people signed up. Do you have any comments or questions before we hear the protesters? In the interest of time, since a number of you have signed up to talk about this item, I would ask that you keep your comments brief, not repeat what has already been said to And I would really like to hear whether this new application is in fact responsive to what you asked the applicant to do. So, Mr. Dubry, we'll take you first. Give us your name for the record, please.
Ross Dubry, 2220 Shadow Lake Drive, here on behalf of Neil and Jean Cornell at 314 Southwest 104th Street. In addition to the TE that was identified in the staff report, we would also ask that the SPUD document limit the minimum size of the lots to at least seven tenths of a lot, excuse me, seven tenths of an acre. I spoke with the applicant this morning and understood from him that they would not have any objection to either one of those requests, either the TE that's identified or the minimum lot size.
So, your request is seven tenths of an acre, minimum lot size?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Barton Long.
My name is Barton Long. I live on 10600 South Harvey, adjacent to, close to the property there. My one concern, they've addressed the issues of the density of the residential area. The O2 zoning is in the statement of the Oklahoma City zoning district categories and definitions, it says O2 is to be used as a buffer between residential and intense real commercial zoning. There's no need for O2 because we have no intents. We're all either O2, or residential, or AA agriculture in that area, so there's, I see no reason to put an O2 there and bring commercial property into what's been an established residential and agricultural area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. My name is Jim Barker. This property...
Give us your address, please, sir. Your address, please, for the record. Address.
Oh, 10600 South Walker.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My property goes way back from Walker, and it's almost to the, their north, excuse me, their southwest corner is right very close to my northeast corner. That is a unique area in Oklahoma City. I've lived there for well over 30 years, and any kind of commercial coming in there is going to change that whole area, because once it gets started, it'll go everywhere. And I'm totally object to any change in the zoning, the present zoning. If it stays the present zoning, they're welcome to build whatever they want, as long as it complies with the present zoning. They purchased the land knowing that it was agricultural, and I think it would do us a very much disservice if you let them change the zoning. And I thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barker.
Planning Commission, good afternoon. I'm Lee Gross. I live at 10,500 South Harvey Avenue. I'll make this very short and sweet. I'm under 90 people on this original list. We invested in this area because of what was there, single family residences and churches. No commercial, no offices. Please let us keep our investment the way it is, our way of life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Claude West. Thank you very much. Commissioners, if you'd come back up, please. How is the south end of the property currently used? Is it residential right now? Is it business there?
There is nothing there. It's land. It's a five-acre plot currently. There is a home sitting at the front of the property. That is what we will either do a complete remodel of or tear down to build a new office space.
So, the home is vacant now? Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Commissioners, other comments or questions? I mean, the, I concur with one of the speakers who had a concern about office being there, but the office uses are very limited, too, so how...
There's a church next door.
Yeah.
I mean, it's zoned A, but I mean, it's an existing church that's currently in operation, is what I understand.
That is correct. There's a church on either side of us.
And funeral home...
So, the church is on either side.
Yeah. Funeral home is where, Todd?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
I'll weigh in on that. I'm, you know, very much appreciative of the people that have come down here today to protest this application. And I've seen this several times before, that the protests began with a very, very dense 22-unit subdivision development that would make me crawl if I were living next door. When I look at the zoning map, and obviously, this is zoned agriculture, both west and east, but there was a corner thing on, is that the one, Todd, Walker and 104th, where that funeral home is? O1 is the, is the most calm rezoning office that you can get. This is total office. There's not anything going to happen there, except just, this house is going to be an office. That's really what it's going to be. And then, from 22 lots to seven tenths, was it, seven tenths of an acre?
That is correct.
Is that the four lots? Well, it's not five acres. You do have right next door to the west of area zoned RA. That's two-acre lots. And then, just one lot over, you've got three houses in a zoned area, R1. That's, that's just right next door. I think that the applicant has bent over backwards to make this thing kind of work, and for that reason, I don't oppose it. I'd like to hear other comments of the commissioners, but it seems to me that with what this is, it really doesn't do anything to diminish the nature of the place where you guys live. You still have this around there. It doesn't mean that every lot is going to be R1, R1, R1. It just means that this one little area, at seven tenths of an acre each, is going to be four houses down, and that's it. I can see where the argument is, but I can see also that, that there are areas within close proximity that are already there. So, those are my editorial comments about this.
I have one, one question. If you were to raise the existing home and put an office structure there, since we're doing an SPUD, I think we could ask you to commit to a residential-style building, gabled roof, for example, as opposed to...
A flat.
They're nodding yes, sitting behind you. So, they would do something that would be compatible with the other lots that would be developed on this tract, is my question.
Home metal building.
Yes, sir.
Say 70 cent? What's our usual language, about 70%?
They've already committed to the 70/30.
Okay, it's in there?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then, that would satisfy me. Janice, you have a comment?
I had, if we're inclined to approve this, I had a question about the signage. They're asking for two signs. Do I have that right?
I thought it was one non-acessory sign.
One monument? Yes.
Or one accessory sign. I apologize, not a non-acessory sign.
It's one, one sign for the office and one residential neighborhood identification sign for the...
But I don't see that the neighborhood residential identification sign is identified as described, other than as, you know, an eight-foot, 100 square feet monument sign. I just don't think that it's necessary to have anything that large for four houses, you know? So, I would like to see some control on that neighborhood signage if we're inclined to approve this. Perhaps half that size.
Well, I mean...
That's fine. We will make the sign smaller. I mean, we're trying to be workable. I mean, we don't want to just...
Half is not usable.
Respect or unvalue anybody's property.
Four foot times, like, on 104th. Who's going to see that? Well, my neighborhood marker is as big as this horseshoe. I mean, you know what I mean? On both sides of the street.
You don't live in a neighborhood of four houses.
Well, I agree. I'm just, I'm not particularly fussed by an eight foot, but half, I think, is not, not usable, in my view.
Well, they've already agreed.
They've agreed to half, that's fine.
Well, we'd be, we'll do two TEs. One is the replacement structure on the south lot will be residential-style construction, and the neighborhood sign will be one-half the size of the business identification sign.
And did we put a size limitation on the lots?
Yes.
So...
Okay.
Seven tenths of an acre?
TE3, seven tenths of an acre, minimum lot size. So, that is now the application. And you agree?
Thank you, sir. Yes.
It's still could be a six-by-eight, a six-foot by eight-foot-long sign, that's half, so it don't have to be necessarily four feet.
Yeah. Okay, well. All right. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item 9 as conditioned. Cast your votes, and it is approved.
Thank you, sir.
Item 10 is ABC 760. Request for an ABC 2 alcoholic beverage consumption restaurant with alcohol overlay, located at 2035 South Meridian Avenue and Ward 3.
Yeah, my name is Zheng Ju Hua. I'm here for Restaurant Staying Ancient Taste to get the ABC 2.
No one has signed up, commissioners. Approval. We have a motion and a second to approve item 10. Cast your votes. You approve. Thank you.
Okay. Item 11 has been continued. Item 12, PC 10-307. Application by Zerbi Interest, rezoned 12930 Northwest 10th Street, from the AA district to the C 3 district, Ward 3.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Gray with Craft and Toll, here representing the applicant. We are requesting approval of this application to rezon the hard corner. It's approximately 225 feet by 275, just at the northern ends of Oklahoma State limits. We feel this is a compatible use, based off the adjacent development to the north, and it is in conformance with the plan.
Okay, commissioners, no one has signed up. I have a couple of things to say about this. I'm not in favor of it. Item 12, and the reason being is, is that this is an unobstructed corner. I know it's only one and a half of 1, you know, 1.6 acres, but there's no controls whatsoever. This is straight zoning on a commercial corner. I would like to see this be a PUD with restrictions on architecture, on signage, on uses, et cetera. I really think just a blanket rezoning of a thing like this on a commercial corner, and it is an important commercial corner, because you've got this activity across the street, even though it's in Yukon, but you've got all this activity across the street, and by just flat rezoning, just without any kind of control whatsoever, you have every single C 3 use, including 50-foot signs that can be constructed on that corner, and I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that. I think you need to have a design for this corner. That's my comment, and I would, I mean, you could continue it, I move to deny it, but I'm not in favor of it. Commissioners?
I too, I'll chime in. I too am not in favor of it in this condition, but if it was in a planned unit development, something like that, where we could deal with some of the design characteristics, even if it didn't have a diet design, at least we could have some of those things in place that would help us to get a quality design on that corner.
I would agree with that. I mean, obviously, it's going to be some kind of commercial development, but I do think it needs to be controlled, described, and yeah, so. Would you like to continue?
I believe that my client would like to see this application move forward. I do appreciate and respect the comments of the planning commission. It is all in the opinion of the applicant that this is a reasonable zoning plan, based off of the development patterns in this area, based off of what's already happening to the north with the lows and improvements over there, and this is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and would respectfully request your, your positive approval.
I move to deny. We have a motion and a second to deny item 12. Cast your votes. It is four in favor, three opposed. No action. Somebody want to make a motion to approve and see if the vote changes? Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item 12. Cast your votes. We'll see you next time, I'm afraid, which would be the June...
August 9th.
August 9th, I'm sorry. We're in July. I'm trying to take you backwards.
Okay. August 9th?
Less than a quorum, yeah, August 9th.
Okay.
Less than a quorum in either, favor of either motion, so we continue.
Thank you.
Item 13 has been deferred. Item 14, SPUD 674. Application by Gerald Brown, rezoned 825 through 829 North Portland, from the R1 district to the SPUD 674 district, Ward 3.
I'm Gerald Brown. This is a retail store, it's been there since 1960, and I think it's still under a residential area, so I think it needs to be upgraded to a SPUD anyway.
How'd you get away with it for 50 years?
They, they put in the zoning at that time when they built the building in '60 as a variances, with variances. Yeah. That's why they allowed the retail store there.
No one has signed up, commissioners?
If I may, you know, I don't have any problem really at all with what it is you are doing on that side, or you continuing to do that, or you selling it, somebody else is going to. I have a little bit of concern about the open space on the north end of the lot, and given that the uses that we're approving include, you know, general retail and that sort of thing, I'm, I'm much more concerned about the impact of that kind of possible or potential use on the residential properties to the north. And I wonder if there might be some way to address that?
The, the north side of H Street, you're talking about?
Yes. Well, my concern is about what's going to happen to your property that fronts on the 8th Street...
Oh.
On the north side of your lots. It's just open space.
Yeah, it's just an open lot. Yeah. It's part of this to be changed.
I'm sorry, you need to come up forward if you're going to speak.
I'm sorry, do you not own this entire tract?
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm asking, I'm asking this gentleman.
Okay, would you go to this microphone over here, please, and wait for me to ask you to speak up?
Do you not own this entire tract?
Eight 25 and eight 29. I own them, too.
So, you own up to 8th Street?
Uh-huh, up to 8th.
All right, so what we're looking at, okay.
On the south side, not the north side.
Okay.
So, if you give us your name and address, and then tell us what your comment was, please.
Richard Coleman. It's just the...
What's your address? What's your address?
It's 12th Court.
Okay.
Just north, the lot's just north of him.
Okay.
And so, if I, if that's not in question, I would just want to see how this proceed, because we're wanting to do the same thing, get that rezoned, is what we're wanting to do.
There you go.
So, there's your issue, Janice?
Well, I guess my question is whether there might be something done to protect the houses on Northwest 8 from this use or other potential uses moving for, moving north. And like I said, I don't have any problem at all with the use he's making of the land or someone continuing to make that use, the, just wide open, sorry, let me find my uses here.
So, is there a tree line across the north side of your property? That appears on our diagram.
Yes, that, yeah, that, right next to the street, 8th Street, yes, tree line there.
So, is that reasonably well-screened visually from...
Probably so, yeah. There will be nothing built on that lot. They'd be, they'll stay vacant until somebody wants to zone it commercial at some other time. By now, there will be nothing done to it.
Okay. Janice, go ahead.
The zoning that he's requesting includes retail sales and services general. That is sort of the most wide-open, commercial use, retail use of property possible. If that's the, I mean, if that alone were what were in front of us, I would have a big problem with that. So, my question to you, I guess, is, can you commit to keeping the space that's open open? Can you commit to keeping that open space?
What was that?
Can you commit to keeping that open space...
Oh, yes.
...undeveloped?
Yes.
You can?
Oh, yes.
Wait a minute. Hold it. Wait a minute. Do you understand the question that she just asked you?
Yeah, there will never be built on it.
Right. That means if you want to sell that property...
If I sell it, that's up to whoever wants to...
Not if you agree to it here today. Not if you agree to it here today.
Oh.
Well, it has to come back to us.
So, I have to zone it commercial to build on it? So I have to zone it commercial to build on it. I don't think you can build on a spud probably, can you?
If you agree in the spud today that there'll be no building on the north half of that site, and you decided you wanted to sell a portion of this land, it would have to be rezoned in order for that to occur.
Right, yes, right. Well, I know under spud that you can't, you won't be able to, so that, that's fine with me, while I own it, that, I'm not, not against.
But to be clear.
Yeah, this is.
You can't come back.
Let's be clear.
He's got it. Okay, I just want to be sure, because I saw Mike's reaction.
Well, mine too, when, when he first said it.
I'm just going to try to pull the wool over the thighs, you guys.
No, but I think at times that that's, I mean, I think that's going too far. I think that's overreaching for, for us to get a commitment from, no offense, sir, a unrepresented.
My God.
Consumer that operates a retail stand for this, I mean, effectively, that operates a retail store, to ask for that kind of concession when I don't, and sir, I want you to understand, I'm not trying to be critical of you, but I don't know that you're 100% clear about what that actually means to your ability to use and transfer your property. So that, I, that I don't like. I mean, if that was Dennis and Brian sitting there, I think I'd have a different view, where I had sophisticated people that understood the impact of that. I just don't think that this particular person quite understands what's being asked. No offense, sir. Please understand that. You're a volunteer, but I just don't think that's an appropriate use of our form, frankly. That's, that's my public policy statement for the day.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the application as, as is.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the application. Cast your votes, and it's approved. You approve, sir.
Thank you. Item fifteen, Spud 675, application by Riverport Park Limited to rezonate 1601 South Portland from PUD 1417 to Spud 675 in Ward three.
Hello, I'm Steve Landies with Land Run Group, representing Riverport Park Development Group on this spud. Really, there's not much to this. There's really two items that are associated with it. The original PUD, number 1417, was approved approximately a year ago, and the only thing it did, it limited the use of convenience stores to a small convenience store. Problem nowadays is, if you sell alternative fuels, there's more than six type of fuels to sell, and so that's the small convenience stores, you don't allow any more than six, you know, type of fuels or pumps. The developer that we're working with, and is trying to look at, look at this property, is actually putting in a facility, or interested in putting in a facility much like an on-queue type of facility, would have multiple gas pumps and multiple items like that. Some of the things I've done a little different on this one, normally I agree with you all that you want to get a site plan, have a really good picture of what you're wanting to do on this. The, I kind of deferred from trying to do this at this point because it wasn't completely clear as well. I realize the specific, the, the unique characteristics of this site, it's all 100% within the Sealy River Overlay Development Committee areas. I was kind of more afraid that if we put a bunch, basically provided a site plan that this approved at this location, it was in conflict with what that group was actually wanting to do or would require, that might be a problem, or at least be something we need to bring back to you all at that point. I've worked with the Sealy River Overlay Committees several times before, especially on this property, in this area, this is kind of right at the, you know, right at the certain, really at a very visible point at that Meridian corridor, and I think they are very definite on how they want to see that developed, and developed properly to meet the city's requirements and everything, you know, to, to be very nice. I also kind of have looked at, there's one other item that is sort of defined as a TE in this, in this facility, on this property, and it's really to deal with the split drives. The original PUD defined this property to only have one drive on Southwest 15th and one drive on Portland. Driven through a bunch of the larger convenience stores, a lot of times they'll have split drives, or they'll have dual drives, and this site has kind of one unique characteristic, the drive all the way on the west side of this property is actually, it's, it's public right-of-way, and it's a drive, but it's actual, it was basically built to street standards, but it's actually the entrance into the Oklahoma City's Public Service Building. Okay, kind of, we haven't really discussed this as much with them at this point, but I've noticed that Serta next door uses that drive as if it's a public street, and we felt that we could potentially do the same thing, yet I really don't think that they want us to use it that way. I would actually try to advise against it. Our people don't want to use it that way either, and so that way creates a complete separation of those two right there. The other thing, there's a comment in here, and I talked with Stuart Chee today, originally my comments were, okay, I've looked at the original zoning codes as far as drive separations, and I felt that this may met all drive separation requirements to be able to put dual drives at this location. Right now, based off the way I've done the drawing, I have 165 feet, or a little over 165 feet to the first drive, and I have 60 feet between the two, and then I have another 120 on the far side. Really, the idea is to try to create enough access into this property to make it function. Part of when I started looking at this, I started really looking at similar type on-queue or large convenience store facilities like this, and believe it or not, they all pretty much have dual drives on it, especially on their longsides. I think it's mainly an accessibility issue. I think all other items in this right here, we're pleased to work with the Sealy River Overlay Committee on, to try to make sure it beats what the city wants in that group and whatever. One of the comments that were made in here as well is canopy height. The only reason I actually placed that restriction of maximum two-story heights on the canopy was because I was talking with Ms. Montgomery, Scotty, and she said that that was one of the things that they really wanted to look at, so you could not whatsoever see the canopy or the lighting, of course, from the river. And that's, of course, what we've done with other properties, we've tried to make sure that that fits as well. Her comment at the time was two stories, you know, that would be the maximum height, so that's what I stuck with. You know, that was, if she would have said 1.5 stories, I have a feeling we would have dropped it to 1.5 stories. You know, whatever was really needed within that group, we're happy to do. The main thing that this group and organization would like to do is put in a large-scale convenience store, and yet at the same time, make it kind of nice, because we do realize this location is kind of an entrance into what I see is, hopefully, my children's, one of their neat new recreational retail areas, you know, within the city. Other than that, if there's any questions, I'd love to, if I could answer them.
Well, you confused me a little bit when you talked about drive separations, and you mentioned 160 feet in a couple of places, 165 feet somewhere else.
Oh, well, I think it's 165 feet from the center line to Portland, and honestly, I have to be completely honest with you, I've pulled up the functional classification, and I actually did that, did these separations, and from talking with Stuart, I pretty much thought that everything is defined within this book we've met and exceeded, you know, with the two driveways in there. I think I was a little bit wrong, he and I talked about that. As, honestly, if we could even divert or change that wording that it actually meets, you know, the requirements within this document, I have no problem with that. It's just, really, I think what the primary issue is, our developer really doesn't want, and I really don't want to, and I don't think the city or anybody wants to even try to look into the idea of just being able to get access, of using that driveway or that street. I don't know, I'm not sure if anybody understands whether that drive that comes in over there that goes into the city's facility, whether it is a public street or whether it's a driveway. I mean, we really don't even want to try to address that. We'd like to stay clear of that.
Well, when we talk about separation, we're generally talking about separation along frontage.
Yes.
Not, not distance from the center line.
Okay.
So we're looking for separation from intersections and separations from other points of ingress and egress from your property and your neighbors.
Yes.
So as not to create an unsafe situation of people trying to go in and out of lots in, in eventual ways too close together to create a conflict.
Okay, well, and I understand that, the Portland, I've actually referred to this as a major arterial, and then I've looked at either Southwest 15th as either a minor or collector, and that's maximum 120 feet.
From the center line or separation of drive?
From the center line, on the driveways. Based on, bring this up, kind of like that.
Again, I'm not sure we're, we're concerned about distance from the center line, are we, Janice?
I guess what I'm understanding him to mean is, center line, in other words, the required separation along Portland would be measured from the center line.
Yes.
Of 15.
Oh, yeah.
As opposed to the property line of this property, it's measured from the center line of 15.
From the center line to the leading edge of the drive.
Yeah, as that's the.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
You were confusing me by that description.
Bottom line, we really had no intention of trying to divert from what the city's codes are. Really, what had happened was in that original PUD, it had been limited to only allow for one drive on that property. For the type of use and the type of development this gentleman's trying to do here, that would, I think, create more of a traffic hazard than it would be to actually create, you know, something that works, not only for him, but for traffic flow in general.
Well, I'm satisfied with letting the River Overlay Design District deal with the structure, because otherwise we'll be in conflict with them, and it's within a design district, and that's really their responsibility, not ours. I know you don't agree with me, Janice, I can tell by your smile, but.
That's just how I interpreted it at the time, I just didn't, I mean, I really, even if you wanted us to bring something back to review, I don't think anybody has any trouble with that, it's just, I didn't want to see a conflict there, that was.
I guess I'd like to hear what the other Commissioners think about that idea. I don't necessarily think that we can assume conflict, and I'm not sure that it behooves us to give away our authority to other Commissioners with whom we have little or no communication. I'm not saying they don't do their job, I'm not terribly informed about the job they do, but I guess I'm not ready to just hand over my authority to them either.
Well, my, my question was, Janice, is, I mean, you know, and John, you know, the notation was, the committee, Riverfront Committee approved it.
Excuse, excuse.
The Riverfront Committee approved this application.
I think, well.
Just a few days ago.
Okay, I, I've not heard, well, they, they've approved us being able to put this application, they agreed with it from my, my communication with Scotty. When I first started putting together this S PUD, one of the things that she said that she was very interested in doing was make sure that it, this property will definitely have to have a CA from that development group.
Well, I mean, this is what it says, on July 5th, they took the application and recommended approval, yeah, subject to two conditions, that the canopy be placed a minimum of 50 feet from the north property line.
Okay.
And the 50-foot landscape buffer, dah 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 dah, so they approved it. They went through all the things that we're doing today and said, we like it. Actually, I had to make a comment, is that I think that the spud that you put together, you know, with landscaping and architectural features, et cetera, is perfectly fine. My sole objection is big gasoline sales, big trucks, big things, and that's not my idea of what should happen on this piece of property, and that's where you get with the ingress egress issues, you've got the potential of big trucks coming in. We, we, just not too long ago, had an issue about a totally inappropriate big truck, big canopy place that was denied, actually, by this, by this commission. I think that everything that you want to do there, with that exception, is big gasoline, big trucks, big canopy, everything else is fine, but I think that's where my, my, my problem comes in with this application, and I don't know if the Riverfront Committee discussed it, I don't have any minutes or anything else. I like the application, but I think that you need to look at the TEs and delete that one aspect.
Okay, well, we could do anything like that. In fact, I have to know from my developer's standpoint, he concurs with you. This was not, and is in no way, shape, form, or fashion in any way defined as a truck stop, and really what it is, I think, due to the location, you know, basically you're going to have in that development area, that it, as it develops, a high level of retail and airport traffic and that kind of stuff.
Then you, then you, then the gasoline sales large.
Well, that's where we have gasoline sales large. That's what this application is for. The only thing we've done differently on this application, the original application in the PUD only allowed for gasoline sales small.
Yeah.
Which only limited eight pumps, or six, six pumps, excuse me. And so what we're doing is by going to gasoline sales large, it allows for multiple pumps, and I think.
How many pumps?
I think, I would, I'd hate to actually say something that's incorrect on this one, but I think it's closer to 12 to 15, you know, based off of, because, well, and I don't exactly define a pump, when you have your pumping station, you have like six different fuel set, services nowadays. The easiest definition I have to date is on-queue type facilities, it's very similar to that type. That's basically what he's trying to.
The top dancer.
Well, and that, that's. Eighteen?
It'd probably be, I mean, if it's as similar to the typical on-queue that we've built lately, which are, I was wrong about the one I didn't agree to on Northwest Expressway, because they've turned out to be really nice tenants, and.
It actually has.
It really, it really has made a significant difference in the area.
Oh, but we.
I think that one has, I think, 18 separate, like nine islands, which begets.
Eighteen pumps.
Eighteen separate fueling.
Yeah.
Stations to each side.
Yeah, and one of the things.
It's really maybe. Twice that. Isn't that about right? You can get 36 cars at, at the pumps. I think that's how it goes. Janice is right.
And one of the unique parts of this site is, I think, associated with that, you know, you always talk about that being a relatively nice facility, on this site, due to that overlay district, we have a minimum 50-foot landscape buffer additional along the frontage, yeah, and we have additional, we also have our lighting and signage restrictions increased greatly over what that would be in the first place. So there are a great number more restrictions. As well, you have an entire design district that's going to be 100% reviewing the characteristics of the building, the layout, the landscaping, the lighting, and limited lighting, everything associated with how it impacts potential river developments. And so for that reason, you know, I didn't want to really bring up a site plan, and really, the, the two items is just that larger facility like that, and the other one is, I think, you see, if we only have one little drive in the middle, that could be a congestion issue, and that's the, and that was a restriction placed in that original PUD, and so that's the only issue that we're trying to address, and well, that with the fact that, you know, use of, or even trying to look at the use of that other road or driveway is really not something, really, I don't think it's conducive to the city, the city's, you know, their, their facility, service facility, I, I, we want to stay clear of that, actually. I think that's.
So basically, if the original PUD had permitted four points of ingress and egress on this site, you wouldn't be here.
Yes. Is the original PUD allowing larger gas stations or more pumps, and with four?
So the original PUD did not allow gasoline sales large?
Small, no, sir, small.
Just, okay.
It was restricted to small.
Let me, let me be clear with what, where we are, you know.
Sorry.
We have eight TEs here.
Yes.
And which TE of the eight are you not, are you asking to vary?
Actually, the only TE that I've looked at that has any issue to me whatsoever is item number two.
Okay.
It says access should be limited to one driveway on Southwest 15th and one access point on Southwest.
And you're asking for two on each?
Yes. I don't even care if we want to call it two, if we want to define two of it at a certain location with a divided island in between it, where that's your signage is going to be, and certain landscape characteristics there, I think we're happy with that. I just think one single drive in the middle will be, actually create a congestion issue on that corner, which would actually be more dangerous than.
Good.
Here's one reason why it makes a difference. Under signage, it, it says that it will be a maximum of two ground signs and two river sport identification signs per entry. So, you know, if we're talking about four instead of two, we're now talking about twice as many signs, so.
I would love for you all to make an exception to remove that requirement if that, if that could be done, I have.
I mean, we're, we're already talking about four signs per driveway.
Per entrance.
Two of each, you know, two ground signs and two identification signs per driveway.
I don't, you know, I know what he's saying, instead of having like two driveways here, so that would be four, that'd be four signs, and you got two over here, that's four signs. What about if we just allow them to have a driveway with a medium in between it, one driveway with a medium in between it?
Small draw you have up here, that was really more the parents of what I was trying to do, create like a 60 or 50-foot median in between it, and that's basically where your signage was going to be, that combined with the landscape.
Well, so then if we.
But you're talking about a 60-foot wide median?
Well, honestly, when I drew that.
That's a lot.
Honestly, I hate to say it, when I drew that area, what I was really trying to do is show that I felt that this would meet.
What about a, what about an eight-foot medium in between a?
All right, we're starting to design this in the horseshoe again, and I guess what we're going to ask you to do.
Yes, sir.
Is come back with a site plan.
Is come back with a site plan and show us what you want to do, which you can then take back to the river authority or river design committee as well. Because I'm just hearing people wanting to know more specifically here what it is you are going to have on the site.
Well, honestly, we're going to have a on-Q type facility?
We want to see it.
Okay.
I think, I think that's where we're ending up.
If the drive situation wasn't in conflict, he agreed with the rest. If the drives is not in conflict, we can't understand that. That's what dictates exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, actually, I said that, and it's not really the river port part, the Ford, or my, my people that actually have a problem with the drives, other than their overall PUD limited the number of driveways. It's the developer on what he's trying to put in there that actually, that becomes a point of contention.
Let me tell you what--
We need to speak.
Let me tell you what the TE would allow.
Uh huh.
It would allow, the way the TE's written, it would allow two thirty-foot two-way drives, one on each, one thirty-foot two-way drive on each street frontage. A two-way in and out, thirty-foot wide approach, one on each street frontage.
Okay. You know, honestly, that's the only point of contention.
And that's a little bit flexible with plan review when we're talking about a facility like this. They can work with you on the radiuses and some on the width, but generally, it's a thirty-foot approach on each street.
The only problem I have is I really don't have a complete understanding of, of the way that layout or how that will impact that layout on the site design as well with you.
Chairman, I think what you suggested, I think that's--
That may be, honestly, from your, I kind of maybe concur with that as well. That way y'all can see a little better site design.
Well, we're going to, this conversation could go on for another forty-five minutes and not resolve itself.
I'm just curious why it has to go back to the river folks if they've already approved--
Well, the only thing--
They have a design authority or design approval right authority. It's a design district.
What the Riverfront Design Committee does is if any case that comes to the planning commission that's in that area, they first have to review it--
And approve it.
And then they can put comments to the--
Right.
Commission. So they haven't seen anything either in the way of building or site design yet, but it will all go back to them at some point.
Okay, all right. I understand.
Okay.
But--
Okay.
What do you need, one month, August ninth?
What, okay, and I want to try to get this clear. Are you all needing to see just, not the actual building elevations, just the actual site layout?
Layout of, how the sites can be laid out.
So you don't need to see the landscaping plan and everything that would be required by the river authority? You just want to see--
We need layout right now.
The layout of the facility? And see how it's going to fit with your own approaches?
And access, how it's going to be accessed.
Okay, I understand.
I would suggest that you work with staff so you can get those--
Yeah.
Those variances and--
And I kind of agree with that. I mean, the only thing I ran into too was, I actually thought the drive approaches were fine, and then there was one comment on the staff report that it didn't meet certain requirements. I called Sturt Chee today, and he goes, "Well, actually, it meets these, but it didn't..."
All right, I want to kind of cut the conversation short, and we have some action here.
Okay, sorry.
Janice, are you okay at this point?
All right. I need to continue it so that August ninth--
August ninth.
Okay, we have a motion, second to continue item fifteen to August ninth to allow for site plan to be developed. Cast your votes. Janice, are you voting for or against? Okay. We'll see you on August ninth. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sixteen and seventeen have been continued. Item eighteen, C-5243, extension of Terra Plantation, located south of Britain Road, west of Camarilla Road in Ward One.
Good afternoon, Kendall Dorn with Craft and Toll, representing the applicant. And this is an application where there was a preliminary plat, a preliminary plat approved a few years ago. Forty-five acre plat, one hundred and seventy-nine lots, I believe. Two sections of it have already had final plats been constructed. Since then, obviously, it's kind of went idle, and the preliminary plat has expired. And now my client is looking at purchasing this development, and, but we found out that the preliminary plat's expired, so obviously, the purpose of this application is to request variance to extend the preliminary plat, reactivate it, and we'll probably have a final plat to you here in a few weeks.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
On Sue Anthony Lane and Stacy Lane below, will those two align?
Yes, they'll line up. These obviously are plotted by your staff from preliminary plats and--
Okay.
But yes, we'll make certain, in fact, the stub to the south is currently built, so we'll make sure the final plat lines up with it. Yes.
Okay, we have variance to TE number one, and you're in agreement with TE number two?
Yes.
Motion and second to approve the variance, cast your votes. That is approved. Second, the motion, second to approve item eighteen, cast your votes. And that's approved, thank you.
Nineteen through twenty-two have been continued. Item twenty-three, PUD fourteen fifty-nine, application by David Carter rezoned fifteen three twenty-one North Rockwell from the AA District with the PUD fourteen fifty-nine District in Ward Eight.
Mr. Chairman, Members of Commission, Brian Coon, with Coon Engineering, representing the applicant. You heard this briefly about, back in May, at which time you asked me to do a traffic study. We've done that, came back in June, they had not really, hadn't been done yet, so now we're here today. Traffic study was turned in a week ago. Traffic Department wanted to continue it, so they had a chance to review it. I'd like to have it heard today, and I've got the study. Like I said, we delivered it last week. The tipping point for doing a traffic study with residential lots is fifty. We're at fifty-eight. I've read the report, like I said, I also go steward a copy of it in the hall in the back. There's only been one accident at Rockwell one hundred and fiftieth in a year, and it was caused by a deer. So it wasn't even necessarily a traffic accident because of traffic. The traffic report states that there's, this amount of traffic does not warrant any improvements to the existing infrastructure. So I think even in a month, when you come back, the report will be the same. There's just not enough homes here that would generate any kind of a need for improvements. We are in conformance with the competency plan with this layout. There are four TEs on this. This is, again, just zoning, so we will be back with the preliminary plat, at which time I'll probably talk staff, because one of the TEs talks about putting in a connection to one of the neighborhood, you know, to one way or another. I know that there's nothing, there's bigger tracks to the south, to the west, there's bigger tracks to the north. I do know, and there was others, another firm in here earlier today that is doing a residential layout on the properties to the north. So I think what we could do is at least get to the preliminary plat stage and say, "Do you want it north, east, south, which way would you like it?" And I don't know, the other TE, all the TEs I agree with, but just, I think at this time, we really don't know which way you'd like to have that stub go. We're okay with that. One of the things, I've got on a map, you won't see it, but there's new elementary school going in immediately on the other side of Rockwell. To the north of that elementary school, there's two subdivisions that are already in place, with senior family homes. So it's moving in that direction, there's water in place, there's sewer in place. We have requested your approval.
No one has signed up, Commissioners?
And thank you for your comment. I haven't been calling bad in a long time, but sophisticated, I haven't been called a lot, so thank you.
I move approval of application, I submit it.
Second.
Motion, second to approve item twenty-three, cast your votes.
Thank you.
Mike really didn't know what he was talking, he kind of just started rambling at that point.
I know, he just looked, he just saw face and just said so, I understand. But I'll still take it.
That concludes the public hearing items. Planning Commission Committee. Planning Commissioner, I have a couple of things. I've talked to Jim Couch, and we will likely have a joint council Planning Commission workshop in October. The general subject of which will be the roles of the commission and the council in the plan development and implementation process, and how we can work together once the plan's adopted. Do you want to jump in on that?
No, no, I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah.
Me too.
Yeah.
That's going to be a lot of fun.
I have primed municipal councillor.
Okay.
And Mr. Couch, so we'll be ready to go. One of the, one of the things that strikes me about our PUDs is we're getting PUDs with language which says, "We'll comply with the landscape ordinance at the time of development," which means we're really not getting anything special in landscaping beyond what the basic ordinance provides. I thought it'd be nice if we had a study session at some point to talk about whether the bar should be set a little bit higher when we're doing PUDs, and get some community input on that. My other question is, just one for you, JJ, is a follow-up. A while back, we had a question about parking businesses along Western and Cafe Nova in particular. Have you delved into that at all since we spoke about it?
Yeah, there were two issues. One was, were they required to valet, which we went back and looked at the approval on the Board of Adjustment Order, and it was talked about during the meeting that that's what they were going to try and do, but it wasn't a requirement of the variance. And the other was that if they had covered up one of their required spaces with a dumpster, and that came from the council meeting, not here, but, you know, that--
Okay. Wasn't there also a cross-parking easement question about, weren't they, at one point, at least as I understood what was told to us here, Cafe Nova had made arrangements with another property owner for off-site parking, and then that's lapsed, and so it's just created more congestion as--
That wasn't a requirement, and they talked about that at the, that they, yes, we have parking, and we're going to valet people--
Oh, so that's just all--
--a few blocks north, and it was, it was just talking, it wasn't a requirement of the approval.
Okay.
That also, that Western, I mean, I know we're encouraging that development and that, that restaurant vibe and things that are going on over there, but there is, it seems like we've had more than one application that's come in that says, "Oh, I've got a deal worked out to park over it." Was it Ketch's?
Yes.
Last brick that came in?
That Brian Ketch's, the, up there.
The design place across the street. And I recognize these are probably enforcement issues, but it seems to me, in my conversations with some of the other restaurateurs and landowners on Western who have parking, that there's getting to be a sense of, shall I say, resentment over this parking issue and its inconsistency. We've got parking, we have to watch our parking people. It's really getting to be a problem, and I don't think these cross-parking agreements are really working. Is, would be my assessment of, and Janice probably knows better than I, she probably hears from the people in the area more than I have, but those that I've talked to have had a pretty firm, pretty strong opinion about that stuff.
Had a long conversation with one of the property owners there. They've met in appearance before council, and, and he's been a friend of mine, I know his father and, but at any rate--
Right.
He's absolutely correct about what's going on, you know, what Nova did, didn't do, and the Spango across the street--
Right.
--that they did, didn't do. You're exactly right, Mike. They promised us something, but then they do something else. But this is my really kind of overall comment about that kind of area. Consider those kinds of areas in other cities with entertainment blocks.
Right.
I mean, you name it, New Orleans, like San Diego, there's these places, they're just jammed with restaurants and clubs, et cetera. No way on God's green earth do they have, what, zoned parking?
Right.
Or, you know, and so when it comes to an area like that, and we do have a Bricktown, we have a Midtown, you know, those, that's going on, that, that really, you know, it doesn't work. Like, you've got a thousand square feet, therefore, you have to have fifteen parking spaces.
Right.
That, these kinds of areas aren't conducive to that kind of restriction. Yet, I sympathize with and agree with the property owners that if some guy puts something in, and they use all of their spaces, because they've said to us, "We have enough," or "We have an agreement with Catch, we have an agreement with the valet parking," and their valet parkers are parking in their parking lot.
Right.
That isn't fair. But that's a, that's an enforcement issue, but I, and I don't know the answer, but we really do have to consider entertainment areas that are really jammed in because they're popular. And the more places there are, the more people come, and the more, you know, so I don't know what the answer is. I don't know what the answer is in these other communities, other than park where you can. I don't know.
I don't know, I just, the complaints are consistent, and--
Well, you've got some business owners who have, in fact, built parking and have ample parking for their businesses.
Right.
And wonder why, literally competing businesses, patrons will park in their spaces, number one.
Exactly.
And why others aren't held to a similar standard, or some sort of sense of at least equity among them.
Mm-hmm.
And I suppose one way to deal with it, at least of issues that come before us, is to deal with parking more specifically than we have. If someone says, "Well, I have parking, and I have, or I have an arrangement for parking," maybe include that in what we approve.
Yeah, I don't know what the answer is.
I don't know.
But I agree.
Well, should we not have approved the ABC overlay, I mean, on that one application? Should we have said no?
Well, I think I did vote no on that one, personally, but I, I don't, actually, can't say affirmatively.
I do think that the difference between, you know, Western Avenue and Bricktown and Midtown is, you know, significant in the sense that, you know, Western Avenue is, is a street that was, you know, dotted with historical commercial development of the small neighborhood type, drugstores and dry cleaners, and, you know, little small gas stations, you know, in a time when six guys would run out and wash their windshield and pump your gas and check your oil, and--
And give you green stamps, but--
That's right. And it's only through a kind of historical anomaly that, that commercial zoning has evolved into this highly intense C-four zoning that permits these really intense citywide, you know, destination kinds of uses. You know, none of those properties would be zoned to the intensity that they are if they were coming in for zoning today. And the only thing that saves them is that they are so small. They're little bitty pieces of property. That's the only thing that is any saving grace in that mix. There's no way that frontage along Western should be zoned C-four. There's no way.
But with one, with one egregious exception, and that's at the north end of Western, at the intersection of Western and Fiftieth.
We don't have to talk about that.
Got a giant truck stop.
We don't have to talk about that. We're going to have plenty of opportunities to talk about Western Avenue and its development, and which way it's going, and parking issues. I'm certainly getting an earful from my neighbors about parking bleeding off of Western into their front yards. And, you know, I live, a full block would be at what would be the corner of Francis on Forty-first Street, and so, you know, when, when people are parking in front of my house because they're going to those uses, you know there's not a parking. Now, I'm pretty easygoing about that, I have to say, and I haven't had some of the experiences that I've had other people tell me about with people parking in front of their homes, and the attendant noise, and trash, and fistfights, and, you know, what all. But we have to remember those neighborhoods, I think. You know, these are neighborhoods that have struggled through, you know, the white flight and the collapse of the public schools, and, you know, have, have done, and the collapse of public schools and, you know, have, have done, really pulled themselves up by their bootstraps to protect their property values and to protect their boundaries. And by and far, they are supportive of small-scale contained development along Western. But, you know, that doesn't mean they want it to become the New May Avenue. That doesn't mean they want it stripped out from Midtown to Hefner Road. I mean, I think we have to be sensitive to the area that surrounds this very small scale after all. And it's very popular right now, but we're going to have to live with that zoning forever. And I think we have to be careful about it.
But then the logical conclusion of what you're saying, because people are going to park in front of the houses along, they're going to, that's where they park, to go, that, that, that the conclusion of what you're saying is, is that it's our obligation to deny any of these applications, whether it's an A-B-C overlay or whatever, if that, well, we didn't have the parking thing, but if that enterprise doesn't have the sufficient number of parking spaces intact, not some, you know, "Yeah, I got that covered," then we should deny it.
I do think that we're going to have to be much more specific about, about the parking needs of individual uses, and also about, you know, making sure that that's not just something that was discussed, but not documented, not really made part of...
That's my point.
You know, the variance or the S-PUD or whatever.
I just, I, I would like to apologize for the strident manner in which I delivered my opinion earlier in the meeting today.
Your apology is accepted.